Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Becky Wamble and I'm the President of the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. And I want to welcome you here to our Bastrop County Commissioners Court Forum for Precinct One and Precinct Three. This initiative called Bastropvotes.com came out of our Government Affairs Committee meeting and it was voted on unanimously by our Board of Directors on December 16th. This was just two days after the filing date for all these candidates who sit before you today. It is also supported by the two chambers in our county other than the Bastrop Chamber. Smithville Chamber of Commerce is promoting this as well as the Elgin Chamber of Commerce. The purpose of this initiative is to promote the vote in Bastrop County. We get the government we deserve and when we don't exercise that right, it's even worse. Our goal is to be a resource for fair, impartial, and informational, and be informational for our candidates that are seeking office. It is an exciting time to be in Bastrop County. We continue to see new challenges and new opportunities as economic growth in Bastrop County propels us into new waters. These are times that are dynamic and call us all to work together diligently as we advocate for the needs of our individual communities and our county as a whole. I'd like to introduce a couple of people that will be helping us out tonight. First, we have our Timekeeper Bernie Jackson, who's volunteered to help us with this initiative. Secondly, we have Michael Hubbard, who will be vetting the questions that will come from the audience. So if you did not get one of the forums to turn in a question, please do so, but I will warn you that we will only do questions from the audience if time allows. And then also, I would like to introduce our moderator Laura Klein. Ms. Klein and her husband own Klein &amp; Company, a CPA firm in Lockhart, Texas. Ms. Klein is a past president of the Abbling Chapter of Illegal Women Voters and she comes to us tonight with a great deal of experience in moderating forums. I will ask you at this time to please silence your cellphones. And before we get started, I want to remind the candidates that we are live streaming this, so please speak into your mics so the audience at home can hear your responses as well as our audience here in the Black Box Theater at the Performing Arts Center here in Bastrop, Texas. Now, I will turn it over to our moderator, Ms. Laura Klein.
Thank you. I just have a few remarks to remind you of the criteria under which we will operate As none of the Democrat candidates have an opponent in their races, they will not participate in the forum but will make an opening introductory remark. Questions have not been made available to the candidates in advance. The questions which I will be asking have been selected by me from a list posed by panel members and rewritten for consistency and clarity by volunteers. Each candidate will be allotted the following: a one-and-a-half-minute opening introduction, a two-minute response to each question, and a two-minute closing statement. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order for each office. The questions will also be answered in alphabetical order by office. The first question will begin with the second person to make his opening statement. Subsequent questions will alternate between candidates in alphabetical order. To allow time for closing statements, a total of eight questions are planned. If time permits, questions will be taken from the audience. Questions from the floor must be submitted in writing and may or may not be utilized based upon time constraints or the appropriateness of the question as determined solely by the moderator. Audience members are asked not to respond with applause or audible statements during the forum. Now, we'll begin with the opening statements and we will start with Precinct One. Mr. Hamner.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Mel Hamner. I'm a retired Air Force Senior Master Sergeant from Logistics Plans and Air Transportation. Had just less than 26 years with them. They trained me on how to build long-range plans and budgets. It's one of the things that I think qualifies me for this position. I also had 22 years of budget management and building with Corporate America and I'm currently running my own consulting firm.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the chamber for having this forum this evening, allowing all of us to be here. I am your Democratic Candidate for Precinct One Commissioner. I'm Doc Jackson. I am currently on the City Council here in Bastrop, have been for over 24 years, and I work for Bastrop County as a Deputy County Clerk. I have worked in county and city government for several years, including the cities of Elgin and Austin, as well as working with Bastrop County. I feel qualified to be your candidate because of my knowledge of county and city government. In fact, I started an initiative with the Texas Association of Counties and the Texas Municipal League to perhaps allow cities and counties to work together more effectively. I hope to bring that same perspective to Bastrop so that our cities, our counties, and our school districts and the community can all work together to accomplish the goals that our citizens desire and deserve. So I asked for your support in November, as I am unopposed in March, but I asked for your support in November as your Democratic Candidate and as the Commissioner for Precinct One. You can go to my website, www.docjackson.com, for more details and if you need yard signs or any other information, you can get them at that point. Thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Newman.
Thank you. I'm Joe Newman. I'm Head of Economic Development for the Greater Elgin Area right now. Prior to that, almost five years up there, eleven-and-a-half years I was Head of Economic Development in Bastrop and helped bring a lot of the growth that comes to our community here. Not all the growth comes within just the city limits. A lot of it goes outside and that's one of the things I bring to the table as far as my qualifications. I've run many different-sized organizations with big budgets, multimillion-dollar budgets, but I think that the only way that this community is going to grow and prosper is to bring in more good companies that will pay good wages and pay lots of property taxes that will help us curtail some of the homeowners' expenses on property taxes. I was on the team and believe me, it's a team effort, economic development. I was on the team that brought the Hyatt here, the Burleson Crossing Shopping Center. The largest taxpayer in this county is Bastrop Energy Partners. That is a clean-burning, clean-gas-fired power plant that pays taxes on $144 million. That is a great company and we'd love having and bringing more people here, making sure that the people that are here, the companies that are here, are appreciated and I thank you for your time and hope you go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Pena.
I'm Willie Pena, the County Commissioner for Precinct One. I've been Commissioner for seven years. I tell you, it's been seven long years. I used to be as tall as Judge Poppy. I used to have a lot of hair like Jared Namkin, but then I got shorter. Seems like I got beaten in the head several times. Ever since I've been Commissioner, two months into office, we had the first disaster, Wilderness Ridge, and then 2011, we had the Bastrop Complex Fire, and then this past few months, we had the Memorial Day Flood and of course, the Hidden Pines Fire and then the Halloween Flood. So even with the seven years we had, the Commissioners Court will work as a team. We have tried to meet the needs of the people and kept the tax rate as low as possible and we have initiated quite a few projects. And I'm running for reelection so I can continue those projects. That way, we can complete the projects that are needed for the community here. The other thing I want to say is that I brought with me leadership and management experience. I retired from state government 24 years, 40 years with the military. I was enlisted in '67. I retired on June 30th, 2007, 40 years later, then I got elected in 2008. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Insinger.
My name is Fred Insinger. As Jerry Clower said, I am educated well beyond my intelligence and that's why I lean towards the community. I lean towards our entrepreneurship in the community and in the entrepreneurship of our district, in our districts. Road and Bridge specifically. I have a master's degree in administration, Certified Public Manager through Texas State University. Those are my qualifications, but most of all, I'm a father. I'm a husband. I have two children in our schools and we are predicting growth in our community and it is my responsibility to be ahead of the game. We cannot have any opportunities for growth to get ahead of our knowledge and so therefore, I am the Commissioner that will be in the community, hands-on, at the driveway, on the sidewalk, and I will take care of our needs. You will have access to me. I need your vote. My name is Fred Insinger, running for County Commissioner, Precinct Three.
Mr. Muth.
My name is Mark Moit and I'm running for Bastrop County Commissioner Three as a Democrat. I have 28 years' experience with Texas Department of Transportation, 20 of those years up here on the Hill. So I know the area. I dealt with the 2011 fires. I dealt with the floods. I had to get contracts together, go through FEMA to get these contracts lit so we could get the infrastructure built back, so I'm familiar with that. I'm very involved in the community. I'm a member of Sacred Heart Church out in Rocknee. I am the hall rental agent, which takes time. I volunteer for that. I have been involved with Little League out in Rocknee. I ask for your support and I'm looking forward to the next forum so I could take some questions. If y'all have any questions, y'all can talk to me outside and I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Stavino.
My name is Colton Stavino. First off, I'd like to thank our chambers for all the hard work that went into putting this event on and allowing people to have the opportunity to meet candidates in here and make an informed decision. I graduated from Texas A&amp;M University with a Bachelor of Science degree. Close to four years ago, I was blessed to be hired on as the LPHCP Administrator for Bastrop County. In that position, I've been afforded the opportunity to work very closely with the Commissioners Court on as many concerns, items that you could imagine, ranging from recovery of disasters to concerned citizens and budgets. I think that my experience in this capacity and working closely with the Commissioners Court gives me a great insight and advantage to this County Commissioner position. I really enjoy being involved in the community. I am currently on the Bastrop Sportsman's Committee, which raises money for our local school districts. I was appointed to a four-year term on the LCRA Mid Basin Regional Council, giving me information related to our water. And lastly, I was selected to the best leadership class that's hosted by our chambers as well. So again, Colton Stavino, running for County Commissioner, Precinct Three, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. I skipped Mr. Mulkey, I'm sorry. We'll go back to him now.
That's quite all right. You'll find that my resume is a little different than everybody else's anyway, so. Good evening. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's a large, much larger crowd than I ever expected to be here. My name is Mark Mulkey. I am running for County Commissioner for Precinct Three and I'm running because I believe that we need to have a strong leader in this position. To serve in any elected capacity, one must not only be a leader, you also have to be able to listen and to learn from others and to seek advice from those who have more experience in certain areas than you might have. Being a leader isn't just about being the boss. Being a leader means that you must first be accountable and responsible to the people that work for you and the people that you serve. True leaders will also acquaint themselves with people who are experts in their fields, people who can be called upon to give advice that will help you make decisions that you may not have enough information to make. It also helps when the leader has a deep knowledge base that he or she can pull from, knowledge not just from textbooks but from real-life experiences. I've done everything from teaching school to working offshore oil rigs, from managing a steakhouse to being the head of a security team at a consumer electronics show in Las Vegas, from operating heavy equipment to driving trucks all across our nation for over 30 years and even being a DJ at a country station in Alaska of all places. I'm a small business owner, too. I have been working since my first job as a paperboy when I was eight years old and because of that, I have many years of real-life, real-earned experience and a wide range of knowledge that just can't be taught in any kind of classroom. In essence, I've been training for this job my entire life. I do hope that you'll vote for me and give me a chance to lead. I look forward to serving you as Bastrop County Commissioner, Precinct Three.
All right, we'll start with the first question, which is, what are the top three issues facing Bastrop County over the next four years and how would you address them? And we'll start with Mr. Newman.
Thank you. The growth that's coming our way, some of you just have no idea what it's like being Head of Economic Development for two cities in this town. The growth is something we've got to get ahead of, be prepared for. To do that, the second thing we need to be is protecting our water system. Our water is a precious resource that's got to be doled out just right and I think that I've been in so many meetings about water that it's just unreal. The next thing is transportation. The roads here could use some improvement, but my background, I ran the state agency, the Texas Economic Development Council in Austin, and I was their lobbyist. A lot of this that goes on has to do with what the legislature dictates that's going to happen to this community. The major thing that's about to change this is there's going to be a railroad line that looks like going to the eastern side, western side of the county and it's going to affect both Precincts One, Three, and Four if it comes in like it said it would. That high-speed rail running through there, freight rail, is going to change our community a lot. It'll be to the west side of the Hyatt Regency. There's other challenges I could talk about, but believe me, I think I have a good grasp on what's happening, what's about to happen, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Mr. Pena.
My three challenges that we see here in the county, first of all, has been the infrastructure. Past seven years, I've been working real hard and making sure we improve the infrastructure, in particular, the roads, county roads. That's really important because all the county roads lead to the major highways and we have paved all the roads. We're down to about eight more roads to go and of course, the other thing is maintaining those roads. The other thing is water. It's always been the water. Even before I was elected in 2008, the water issue was there and it's really important that we can serve the water, but at the same time, we want to protect the individual rights, property rights, and we have to balance that. We do have a lost Pines, Crown Water District and they're doing a good job and I appreciate them doing that job. The third thing, it has to do with taxes. Every time we improve our infrastructure, somebody has to pay for those and if we don't draw industry down here, the property owners, the homeowners are the ones that are going to pay those services. As it is, most counties, other than property taxes, the majority of the property taxes goes to the school district. We only get about 17% of those taxes. And the road and bridge, even less. For Precinct One, my budget for this year is a little bit over $600,000 for county roads. That's not very much and that's for the whole precinct. And it gets tough and citizens are concerned by taxes, property taxes, so we need to do something about that and we have been doing something about that. Commissioners Court has been looking at the issues and we keep on working to resolve those issues. Thank you.
Mr. Hamner.
Yes, I'm definitely going to agree with, we've got to capture the growth that's coming here to Campbell. Says we're going to see 130,000 people coming into the entire county, but it shows Bastrop and Precinct One being the large growth area. I'm worried about the infrastructure that we currently have that we need to get caught up before we can even address the population that's coming our way. I'm also concerned about our citizens that are on Social Security, can't get affordable housing because they need vouchers or assistance to get that. I've actually been working on that a little bit with our State Representative's Office and I would agree with the water. I know that they're talking about building a dam down around the Seguin area and that should certainly help us with that issue. Thank you.
Mr. Mulkey.
Precinct Three, I've driven through there quite a few times and there are so many roads in that precinct that need some serious work. That's one of the main things that as the Commissioner that I would be working on is prioritizing those roads and knowing which ones that need to be taken care of first. As far as the number of people that are supposed to be coming into our community, I've heard 20,000, we've just heard even more than that. We know it's going to be a lot and right now, with the number of people that work in Bastrop and go to Austin to work, I believe it's somewhere around 80%, that's an awful lot of people taking 71 just out of Bastrop itself and that does include Elgin going down 290 and everything else. The Commissioners, we all need to be working with the state DOT offices and so forth to make sure that we're getting these roads done and bridges put in, the overpasses put in to where we can bypass stoplights and keep that traffic flowing. Another thing that I heard about today was getting people to live and work, both of those here in Bastrop instead of so many people driving into Austin. To do that, of course, we've got to get more businesses involved, we've got to get some larger corporations that hire more people and so forth, but overall, the biggest issue is definitely going to be the roads with all these people in here and no real infrastructure to handle the amount of traffic that is going to be put out there. So the Commissioners definitely need to be working on that and as County Commissioner, I would be doing my utmost to study that as much as possible and get the right answers, get the right information in so we can take care of those problems before we get that mass influx of people.
Thank you. Mr. Tomino.
I think foremost, to echo other candidates, is how are we going to manage our growth? Projections show that Bastrop County is going to be growing astronomically, I want to say 10th most, the fastest-growing county in the state of Texas. So how are we going to effectively manage this growth and keep the tax rate from skyrocketing on the private property owners? As rooftops come in, those rooftops need emergency services. Without economic development, without business growth, the tax burden is going to fall on these private property owners. So again, economic development, how are we going to address it? I think second would be to take a look at how are we managing our infrastructure, our county roads and our bridges. Currently, there's several different methods to managing those county roads and bridges. Currently, each precinct works on their projects individually. I'd like, as a Commissioners Court, to sit down and discuss, is this our best way of managing our roads and bridges? With the growth, there's going to be much more traffic on these roads. One thing that I'd like to discuss is converting to a unified road system. You have a centralized, you have a centralized road department under the supervision of a professional engineer that would oversee the county roads and I think it's time that we look, other counties of equal populace have been switching and I think this may be a better way to effectively manage our roads with the expected growth. And lastly, water issues, of course, are going to be a major concern on people's minds. We've got a precious commodity here in Bastrop County, in our water, and we need to be able to protect and do what we can to make sure that our residents are able to continue with this blessing that we have of water.
Thank you. Mr. Insinger.
Unified road system is a term. It is ambiguous. It's a good idea, depending on its specifics, I may support it, but it has to be something that does not add a layer of government, that does not add a layer of bureaucracy to our system and that it does not curtail entrepreneurship in our precincts, first of all. Top three, water. Let's talk about water. We cannot afford to buy back our water. We will keep our water, we will conserve it, we will be strong, and we will make sure that we do not buy back our water. However, we do need to be accessible to economic growth and there's manufacturers and industry that can bring a tax base to us that need water and that's why we should take possession of it. And I support that completely and I do not support layers of government that curtail it. Roads and bridges, it's so emotional. I've been out there in the community and roads and bridges is an emotional issue for the people in our community. I can assure you that I will be on top of that. I will be involved in the administration of that. I will make sure that our team out there and our manager out there in the community has the resources, is safe, and can prepare us and continue roads and bridges because it is an opportunity for growth and it's important.
Thank you. Next question. In your opinion, what is the number-one job of a County Commissioner? And we'll begin with Mr. Pena.
The number-one job for the Commissioner in this county is roads and bridges. That's number one. I don't get calls about the quality of air. I don't get calls about water. I don't get calls about anything else other than roads. When are you going to fix my road? When are you going to fix that pothole and so forth? I don't get calls about anything else other than roads. When are you going to fix my road? When are you going to put, you know, fix that pothole and so forth? That's the majority of the calls I get in my office. And you have to go out there and really look at the roads. With the number of people I have, I have eight people in the road and bridge. They've done an excellent job with the money we have. And, uh, we've done a systematic way of doing, making sure we pave all the roads. Before, we had the census in two thousand and ten. We did the majority of the roads in Pine Forest. That Pine Forest subdivision now in Precinct Two. And I gained the other ones, uh, going towards Tucker Hill. Soon after the fire, we started working on old Highway Seventy-One. We completed that, and we continue working that area. There's a lot to do, but that's going to be the number one issue that people are going to call the commissioner's office. Thank you.
Mr. Hamner?
You know, the roads and bridges looks like the eight hundred pound gorilla out there, but the real problem is transparency and communication. When I'm out here talking to the citizens in the precinct, they're, they're not being answered. They know that there's a problem with the infrastructure of the roads. They know there's a problem with the road. They know there's a limited budget. But when they call and they try to get answers, they, they can't seem to get it. And I think that the number one issue should be communicating with the people you work for. And that, that's what I would try to improve. Thank you.
Mr. Newman?
Thank you. Roads are definitely a, a high priority. Uh, in Precinct One, there's a hundred and twenty-eight miles of roads. That's only thirteen point eight seven percent of the entire county. So, it's the smallest, uh, uh, district of, of the four commissioners, uh, precincts. Of that, a, a certain amount of money has to be allocated for that, but, but I was asked the question, how, how do you get more money? One of the ways to do that is sales tax. We, we're one of the counties that have, uh, sales tax dedicated to lowering property taxes. Last year, that sales tax brought in three point six million dollars. If all of you would, and all the people listening would shop at home, shop in Bastrop, we could get that number up and lower those prices, lower, you'd lower your property taxes down through sales tax and be able to, to offer more, um, money for our roads and bridges and the other infrastructure that the county needs desperately.
Mr. Stabano?
I think the number one, uh, job of, of a county commissioner, especially as it relates to, to precinct three, would have to be, uh, your roads and bridges, maintaining those. As I campaigned throughout the precinct, I found out that's, that's pretty much the only thing people will associate a county commissioner with, is, is the roads and bridges. So, that has to be your number one, um, concern, uh, as, as a county commissioner there, and, and helping those residents with those concerns. I, I think, as, as, again, as the population grows and that, um, we need to, to look towards developing a, a, uh, a road plan that's both transparent to, to the residents of Precinct Three, readily available. So, if, um, um, folks that live on a road that, and they have concerns, when is this road going to be paved, you know, fixed, repaired, anything like that? Um, they need to be able to, to, to access that and, and find that information and know, well, okay, we're, we're a year out. And, and be able to stick to that plan and, and, um, and again, be able to manage your, your roads and, and bridges effectively.
Mr. Insinger?
As I said earlier, when you're out communicating and walking the streets and you're talking to people in the communities, road, roads and bridges are a primary, uh, emotional subject of voters. As your commissioner, I can assure you, I will be hands-on in the business of our roads and bridges. We will develop, I will work with the current manager of our roads and bridges. We will do an organizational assessment, and we will make sure that these guys have the greatest equipment, the greatest opportunities, and the greatest public, um, ability to get out and visit with people, to be proud of what they do. Most of our guys in Precinct Three, they live in Precinct Three. That's their life, and they love it. And they have the ability to do great things, but they need a commissioner to be behind them, to drive that force. And I can assure you, under my, not command, but under my help and my support with our current road and bridge commissioner, that these guys are going to get out there, they're going to make us proud. We're going to have the best roads in Precinct Three that we've ever had, and it's very important.
Mr. Malky?
Obviously, we've all been talking to, we're just a bunch of the same people, because everybody that I've talked to definitely brings up roads. That's their, their main issue. Um, one of the things I like to see, I, I, I like the idea of the unified road system. I think that's definitely something that we need to at least discuss and compare it to other counties. I know some have, have, uh, been on it and then gotten off. Some have been on our system and then gotten on it, onto the unified system, and it works better for them. It's all about what saves the most money to where you can put that much money back into the roads in your precinct. So, I think that's definitely a good, a good thing to look at. One of the, uh, one of the things that I've heard about from people out there when I'm knocking on doors is the road condition to them, it doesn't matter if it's a little tiny crack in the road, or if it's big holes in the road. They all want their roads done. And with the limited amount of money that is in the budget to do the roads, then, of course, you have to go by which roads are the worst. And so, you're always going to be upsetting some people because their road isn't getting done soon enough. We had our road where I live at, uh, we'd lived there for seven years, and called the commissioner's office several times to try to get our road done. It finally got done this last summer, and then the floods came through and washed part of it out, and they came right back out and fixed it, which was great. But, I don't think, it's just my opinion, but I don't think people should have to wait seven years to get their road fixed to where it's not messing up their car. We actually had some motor mounts breaking our car that I attribute to driving on that road for seven years. So, that may or may not be fact, but that's, that's my opinion, and I'm sure the other folks out there have opinions like that as well. Um, I'm guessing I'm probably getting close to my, the end of my time here, but I have more to say about this later on, so I'll do that later.
Thank you. Question three. How do you feel about the county's current financial situation? And what, if any, financial challenges does the county face in the near future? Mr. Hamner?
Well, it's pretty tough, because, you know, we got a tax base coming, but it's not here, so we're still working on the tax base that we got. And that's going to be the challenge, is finding a way to get the most bang for the dollars that we do have, to grow the law enforcement, to meet the crowd that's coming, to improve the infrastructure that we have. You know, I think it's going to take a comprehensive plan, a long-range plan, and a step-by-step procedure of how we're going to fix things with the limited budget we have. That, that's one of the things I was trained to do. That's what I did most of my life in the military and did it again for corporate America. I'd like to offer those services to the precinct one people. And, uh, I believe that's be the first thing I would start to do, is to build that comprehensive plan, put money against it, communicate that to the residents, so they know where we're going. Thank you.
Mr. Newman?
Taxes are high. Everyone knows that. Um, there's no way around it, but we need to grow our base. And to grow our base, uh, the, the biggest taxpayers in our, in our county are commercial taxpayers. The people that, that, uh, built widgets or, or the Hyatt Regency, or whatever the, the company is. I know it's everyone's homeowner. They think theirs is too high, but the only way we can get that rate down and get more money to supply our county with the funds that they need is to bring good-paying jobs and good companies in here. I have a background with thirty years of doing that, and I would appreciate your vote.
Mr. Pena?
Obviously, all the citizens are concerned about taxation, and of course, we depend on property taxes. Um, and, uh, the three major employers here in, in the county is the school district, and then we have the Hyatt and the county. Uh, as I said earlier, the majority of the property tax goes to the schools. Now, the idea about, uh, getting a sales tax to the county sounds great. We're going to have to talk to our, our state legislature, uh, to see if something can be done about that. But, the thing is, we have, as commissioner's court, our commissioner's court has done a great job. We have been looking at different ways of, uh, applying for grants that we can use for our citizens. And, uh, and the thing is, we do look at economic development. Uh, we're limited in what we can do. Uh, that's why the cities have their own economic development corporations, and they've done a good job of attracting people down here. But that's the main thing. Uh, we have to start looking, uh, other ways. Uh, because if not, uh, our property, uh, owners, uh, homeowners will continue paying the bulk of the county government, uh, for the services from the county government. Thank you.
Mr. Insinger?
There are many things that, uh, we can do to help our county. We can increase our, we can increase our tax base by this, having good roads, having good schools, having a hospitable environment to get industry in our area. That includes water. That includes the schools. That includes housing. That includes everything. And though there's things that are out of our command and out of our jurisdiction, we can still have influence in those areas. And those are the things that we need to do to increase taxes.
Mr. Malky? Sure. How do you feel about the county's current financial situation? And what, if any, financial challenges does the county face in the near future?
Obviously, I think the biggest challenge we're going to have is, is the growth that we know is coming. And, as has been mentioned already, we don't have the tax base, the income from that tax base. We don't have enough of it to do some of the things that we need to do. We need to put money towards some different things, uh, of our infrastructure, such as the sheriff's office. Um, they're running way behind as far as the number of officers that need to be out on the road, in the county sheriff's office. And at some point, we have to look forward enough to be able to say, okay, well, we're going to have to spend this money to buy, to hire some new, uh, patrol officers, to get some new equipment, whether it's the vehicles, computers in the vehicles, the weapons, whatever. We're going to have to spend that money in advance to get those people going before the influx of all these people come in. If you think about some of the housing developments that we already know about, I know, uh, was, I believe it's Piney Creek that they had a big meeting on last night, and I think that's supposed to be like a hundred and seventy homes. There's the, uh, Piccon Acres. There's going to be another couple, two or three hundred homes. There's multiple, uh, building apartment-type things that are in the works. Excess Ranch is in the works. All of these things are going to require more infrastructure, more emergency services, more first responders, the sheriff's office, all these different things that we don't have the money for right now. So, we've got to start planning on that and planning on a way to get that money in by whether, you know, nobody wants to pay extra taxes. We don't like paying the ones we already have to. But at some point, we may have to pay a few, a little bit more in extra taxes, just so we can get that money in, and, believe me, it'll come back around to our benefit once that happens and we get all those extra services in there.
Mr. Stabano?
I think the county's current financial, uh, status is certainly better than it was, uh, right after the, the Bastrop County complex fire. There was a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of assessed, uh, value that was lost in that fire. You saw the Bastrop County Commissioner's Court were forced to raise property taxes, and, and, and it was tough on the county. And now, uh, here in two thousand and sixteen, uh, you can see the, the court has reduced the, the tax rate, uh, sixty-one cents, sixty-one point nine cents, I believe, per a hundred dollars of assessed value. So, you can see the court is reducing the tax rate, so, uh, one would assume that, that the, the financial status of the county is certainly getting better. Um, this is not to say that, that we need to, you know, sit back and rock back in the chair and, and ride it as it is. The growth is coming, as we've mentioned. Uh, we need to stay on top of our economic development, make sure that our tax base is increasing and keeping up with the residential growth, so the county can still continue to reduce property taxes for, for, uh, for our property owners.
Thank you. Yeah, one of you have already touched on this, but this will be an opportunity for you all to get into this. Officials with the Bastrop County Sheriff's Office have said their department is understaffed and under budget. Given the crowing population, what can be done within the county's budget constraints to meet the department's needs? Specifically, what would you cut from the budget and/or would you vote to raise taxes? Mr. Newman?
Hard question. Uh, it's one that I'm, I'm going to have to pass on, and just say that, that I will look at it. Uh, if I become commissioner, and, and will study all budgets that, since the county commissioner sets everyone's budgets, we, we get a chance to go through and, and fine-tune them or, or add more or, or reduce them. But, uh, the, I, I've been meeting with some of the sheriff candidates and getting their thoughts on it. All of them, it, they've always said, we need more people. And same way with road and bridge. They need more people. Everyone needs, but where are we going to get the money? The only way we can do that is expand our tax base, uh, get people to, uh, shop locally, and, and that's, that's really the way to increase and get more money into the, into the pot.
Mr. Pena?
Well, we, the commissioner's court, have done a good job in doing, uh, reviewing the, uh, budget. Uh, in this county, our county judge is a budget officer. He prepares a budget, and we look at it, and we look at each item. And we have some heavy discussions about who gets what. Uh, ever since I've been in office, uh, every year, the sheriff wants more people. And we try to give him one or two, but, uh, it's like every department, every department wants more people, because we are a growing county, and they want to meet the needs of the people. But, without increasing the tax base, you know, it's a tough choice. So, whoever becomes sheriff needs to really look at the department, do a real good assessment of the department, and see how they can do a better job being effective and efficient, and try to provide those services out there. Being sheriff is not an easy job. And, uh, I know when, because before the commissioner's court, we tried to help the sheriff as much as possible. The majority, uh, almost half the, uh, money, the revenue that come in out of thirty million dollars for the budget for the county, half of it goes to the sheriff's department. Uh, about twenty-five percent goes to the, the jail administration. That's why twenty-five percent goes to the, uh, the deputies, that, that side of it. And it's tough, real tough, but, uh, uh, we're looking forward, every year, to look at the budget over and over again. And then with the commissioner's court that we have right now, we've done a very good job in making sure we can provide those services to our citizens.
Mr. Hamner?
You know, we've already discussed the fact that we've got a limited budget. So, I would look to outside sources. I'd use some of my background. I'd go to the Department of Homeland Security. I'd go to the state. I'd look for grant money there, so that we could apply our budget to hire officers and use the outside grant money to equip and train our officers. That way, we'd be able to grow our population of our, number of our officers and still get them the finest equipment and get them the training that they need. Thank you.
Mr. Malky?
Well, I, I don't want to just say ditto, but I totally agree with what Mr. Hamner just said. Um, one of the things that I, I hope did not come across in my last comment was that I was putting down the commissioner's court and the way they handle the budget in any way, shape, or form. I know from looking at, at the budget and the, and the information that I'm privy to, which isn't a whole lot, but as a citizen, I'm, I'm privy to a little bit of it. And I know by just looking at that, that these guys are stretching every dollar they've got to go as far as they can with it. Now, as has been mentioned, everybody wants more money. They want more people. They want more, uh, material or equipment for their particular group. And without getting more money in, you can't reasonably anyway, spend more money out. That's just not good financing. And so, the way to, to fix all of this, if we can get grants that help pay for some of this, where we can take that money and put it toward other things that's in the budget, obviously, that'd be a whole lot better than having to raise taxes, I'm sure. And as I mentioned a minute ago, we don't want to have to raise taxes. Nobody wants to do that. But as citizens of Bastrop County, and all of us seeing what's going on with the growth that this county's going through, if it comes down to where some taxes have to be raised, even if it's a penny or two on the property taxes, like we just had a, I think it was a half a cent or a penny taken off, even if that comes back on, that's extra money coming in. That's really, if you think about it, it's not hurting us as, as property owners, not a lot. And so, we may have to do that. I'm a conservative. I don't want to raise taxes on anybody. But, as a conservative, I also know that that- But as a conservative, I also know that that possibility may be there. And we have to explore every one of those possibilities, even if it's not really popular.
Mr. Stavino?
Some of the county, um, again, having sat through four budgeting meetings, uh, with the Commissioners Court, I've seen time and time again, county department heads and especially the sheriff, uh, come to the court with, with concerns and requests for, for increased personnel, increased budgets for equipment, uh, things of that nature. Um, you know, everyone's, everyone's got a need throughout the, throughout the county, I think, for, for more personnel to, to handle this growing population. I think, from a county standpoint, I know they're being proactive with a salary survey. Um, they've recently, um, employed an outside consulting firm or such that's, that's executing a salary survey determining where we are, um, comparatively speaking to other counties with equal populace on our salaries. Um, this'll let us know what we need to be done, uh, across the board, whether we've got any, any, uh, folks that are being paid more than they should, uh, but most importantly, those that are being paid less than they should. So this'll give county, the county a standard as to where we need to be. How we address that is gonna be a, a difficult question. It's like, uh, Mark had said, you, you certainly don't wanna raise property taxes if, if, uh, if you don't have to. But Travis County is, you know, is, is, the fact of the matter is dealing, most of our, not most, excuse me, a, a large portion of our, our employees just due to higher pay. We're never gonna be able to compete with Travis County, uh, financially. But the point is to get to where folks will make that decision, was it worth fighting that traffic in Austin for a little extra pay? Or is it worth, you know, the county's competitive enough where, where we can stay here? So, um, I think that's, that's the direction the county would need to, need to head on that.
Mr. Insinger?
Well, um, I work for Bastrop County Sheriff's Department. And, uh, it is true that we are, there's a study going on now that, that talks about, uh, equality of pay. There's a lot of men and women that serve out there that, uh, stay with us in the county. They're, they're, they're dedicated employees. Most of them are here because their families are here, their families are in the school because of, uh, geographic issues. They are not here for pay. However, we lose many employees because we are a stepping stone. We, we are a training area for other, uh, departments around us that pay much more. And so, um, the pay equality is not the best. And we have to do great things to find leaders within our department to create opportunities and grants and outside funding so that we can keep our good employees that are dedicated to Bastrop County. However, Bastrop County has to, um, has to step it up. We have to, uh, we have to, we have to be one with our, with our people that come to us or respond, our first responders, the people that you call every night and come to your house and, and come to your alarms and come to your disturbances and, and come to the, uh, issues that within your realm cannot be handled and we handle them. And so I am, uh, first and foremost, dedicated to helping Bastrop County and Bastrop County Law Enforcement.
Next question. How do you believe the current county government is viewed by its citizens? And what do you think Bastrop County's reputation is within the larger central Texas community? We'll begin with Mr. Pena.
Well, first of all, I, I think we, uh, the county has come a long ways. Uh, we really have. And I think the, being part of Campbell, uh, we became part of Campbell back in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and ten, we became a voting member. And Commissioner Beckett sits in that policy board. And she's done a great job being there in Campbell, representing the county. And I sit on the, uh, Clean Air Coalition Board. And, uh, we have done everything we can. Uh, our image is really a good image out there in the region. Uh, we've taken the lead in many things. Uh, we have applied for different grants. Uh, we did, um, first time ever, at large scale, uh, cleanup of the hazardous waste. Um, and, uh, keep, uh, Bastrop County beautiful. We're involved with that and together as partners, we did a very successful, uh, event. And, uh, of course, we had a limited budget there of forty thousand. But, uh, it was very successful, we had to turn down some people. And, uh, we had a, we're really surprised to everybody, we had a good participation. And we are doing things, uh, here in the county. Uh, other surrounding counties, uh, east of us are looking to us for leadership. Uh, Lee County, Fayette County, Caldwell, especially Lee County. I sit on the board of the Bastrop County Sheriff's Office Board. Uh, they ask for our bylaws, I send copies to them. So we're doing everything we can and we have a very good image out there. Thank you.
Mr. Hamner?
I've been, uh, sitting on the, or in the Commissioners Courts for the last two years when I'm not traveling. I'd have to say that our county runs fairly well and I think it's well-respected. I think some of the outside counties still look at us, at us as country boys. But, uh, I don't see that, I see people that are getting sophisticated. And I believe that's the way we're viewed from the outside. I, I'm sure we have room to grow, we always do. We learn every day and that's what we should take forward. Thank you.
Mr. Newman?
Thank you. The, um, the way we're viewed is, is different than most other counties. Uh, I travel a lot, uh, and the people that come here, that's spending time here, they realize how blessed we are. I mean, we have so many resources, so many things going for us. It's the people that, that haven't stopped to discover Bastrop, the only ones that, that, and I was one of those. I lived in Austin and I thought, "There's nothing in that Bastrop except those dang six lights I catch every time I go to Houston." That's all I knew about Bastrop. When I, but, eh, eh, over time, I, I got to exploring and finding more about, uh, Bastrop. When I came here, when I was offered the job Economic Development Director, I told the board, I said, "They'll, I'll probably stay a year, maybe two. I just don't think I'll, you know, live in a small town that long." That was sixteen years ago. I love this community. I really and truly do. I wanna be able to serve you further. Thank you.
Mr. Stavino?
So I think, um, locally, I feel like people, for the most part, are, um, are approving of, of our, our local government and how it's ran. I know, um, I think one way to enhance that would, would to be more accessible, um, as in a county commissioner, uh, position, to be more accessible to your people, provide responses back to inquiries as, as soon as possible and, and let people know that, that not only is this, this local government being active, but they're, they're being responsible. Um, so communication with, with our, our county is, county citizens is very important to maintaining that positive, uh, look on, on our, on our, uh, Commissioners Court. Regionally, I, I feel for the most part that, that, that just in, in, um, time at the, at our capital in Austin, I've, I've spent and, um, just my few travels, that, that most people are, are aware of Bastrop County and then that they, they're, they view, view it as a, as a nice destination and that, that, um, you know, sympathy, of course, due, uh, due to our disasters. And then a lot of people are, are impressed with how we handled those disasters and recovered from them. Um, I think our tourism department has done an excellent job of, of promoting Bastrop County. Our Hyatt Resort brings in a lot of hot taxes that we can use towards promotion of Bastrop County. And, um, and so maintaining that, that, uh, image regionally would be important to, to, um, to Bastrop County.
Mr. Insinger?
Bastrop County is, uh, very interesting. We have a group of regional people that are in the middle of a huge, um, growth that's coming towards them no matter what happens. And then we have a group of taxpayers and landowners and people that are committed to the community that are rural and they're cautious about growth. They're toxic, they're cautious about, uh, taxes. So in precinct three, it's a very difficult situation because we have most of the growth. We also have most of the rural community, uh, together. Bastrop County is, um, you know, we've talked about it, is the greatest place to live as far as I am concerned. I've been through, I've been an emergency responder in the first fire, the second fire, the third fire, the floods and everything. And I've seen people come together and we have a great opportunity to bring good people and good industry to our county. And that's what we aspire to do. But it requires things. It requires us to have good educational opportunities. It requires us to have not just growth, but managed growth so that we have septic and electricity and all those things and proper zoning. And it requires us to have recreational opportunities, such as a sporting area in Cedar Creek. These are the things that we need. I think we have a great county. I am completely committed to it. And I would appreciate your vote.
Mr. Mulkey?
My wife and I moved down here in two thousand and eight from Alaska. And, um, I'd been in Texas before I moved up there, met her, married her, brought her back. She was tired of the cold and stuff anyway, so, uh, one of the biggest things that we saw when we started looking for homes, we found the name Cedar Creek. And I think my wife just fell in love with the name of that town, just thought it sounded like a pretty neat town. Well, then we started looking into the, to the area more. And our Realtor, uh, Carl Mapes, who actually lives out in, in La Grange, um, he started talking with us on the phone. I mean, this guy was on the phone with us for two years before we finally even got to come down and start looking at houses. Right away, I mean, I already knew Texans were friendly anyway, especially out in the country. But this is where we wanted to be, was somewhere outside of Austin. We knew my wife was gonna be working in Austin. But we wanted to live outside in a nice community where we were out of town and away from all the, the hustle and bustle. And when we got here and started looking at houses and looking at the area, just fell in love with it because Bastrop is that kinda town. The Cedar Creek area, this whole Bastrop County is just wonderful for people to come out when they don't wanna have to deal with all that. Now, we're gonna have some of that stuff coming our way. So what are we gonna do to keep that small-town feel while still being able to generate the tax base that we've been talking about? That's another thing the Commissioners Court's gonna have to deal with, that I'm really anxious to get involved with. And as far as Bastrop itself, we've gotta thank people like the, the Chamber of Commerce. Becky, we're putting on this whole thing. And not only that, but the way she is promoting businesses and everything else has really been a boon just to me as a private business owner. And the, the Economic Development, uh, uh, not Convention, those guys, you know what I'm talking about. Um, they, the corporation, they've done a great job on, on getting new businesses heading this way and everything else. So I don't think you can beat Bastrop from anywhere and I think the rest of the state sees that as well. And that's why they're all coming out here.
Next question. With three major wildfires since two thousand and nine, how should the county prepare for and take steps towards minimizing the risk for future disasters? We'll start with Mr. Hamner.
Well, of course, we're already doing fire mitigation, cleanups in different places. Uh, and again, walking through my neighborhood in Tahitian, I still see a lot of my neighbors who have, aren't cleaning up their own yards and their roofs of their houses and stuff. And to me, that's just an invite for the next fire. I think we need to take down the old trees from the two thousand and eleven fire. That's just kind of waiting to, to start up again. And it's, one of the things that's motivated me to actually run is that, uh, I felt like there was things we could get done. And again, we come back to the budget, it's limited. So one of the things that I've started doing in Tahitian is, uh, actually getting my neighbors to organize and take the trees down themselves with permission from the property owners and the owners of the property. So, you know, again, we, uh, have limited money here. It's time for the citizens to step up and start helping to clean up and prevent their own fires. Thank you.
Mr. Newman?
The, uh, mitigation is definitely a big portion of what we need to be doing to, to keep that from happening again. Uh, Judge Poppy and I talked about, uh, uh, after the last fire, that the people at Camp Swift have just rows of bulldozers up there. I don't know if they would help us or not, but I think that we should ask and see if, uh, we could get the trees knocked down where they can decay on the ground a lot easier. Uh, at my meet and greet the other day, someone asked me and said, "What do you think about the, uh, uh, the Go Green, uh, company going out of business that's been chipping up the trees?" And I said, "Well," I, I wasn't privy to all their business plan, but what really put them out of business was the Houston toad. We've gotta do something about this endangered species that is hampering, uh, cleaning up our, 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 our county. And the only way we can do that is through legislation or to going to our legislators, not just the, the state legislature, I'm talking about federal. Uh, my background in lobbying, I, I did a little lobbying in, in Washington on behalf of the Economic Development Corporation, or Economic Development Council in Austin. It, it takes, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but I think that working together, we can get this, uh, uh, mitigation down and, and clean up our, our, uh, our county and get those hard sticks, uh, down and, and make it look better.
Mr. Pena?
Back a few years ago, when I was in the, uh, Board of the Tahitian Village Property Owners Association, the POA, TV POA, we, uh, started a, a fire mitigation, uh, at that time. It was just a small group. Uh, later involvement, uh, it became Fire CAP. And, uh, we went educating folks and not only in the neighborhood, but in other subdivisions about how to be fire-wise in your property, you know, cutting down the underbrush and so forth. Uh, the colony has done that. They've done a very good job over there. As a matter of fact, they, they received an award for the, the fire-wise. And, and that's what you have to do. And, um, my house survived because I had already done fire-wise in my, uh, uh, property. It came to the house and went around the house. But it survived the, the fire and the, during the, uh, Bastrop, uh, Complex Fire. But like everything else, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, uh, Go Green trying to help us out, and they did. Uh, and they went through some financial problems. And, uh, and, and there's, uh, other, uh, things that property owners can do. Um, being a conservative, I, I prefer not to have more government, I'd like to have less government. And I think our people, our property owners, know they can go out there and do things in their property to keep themselves, uh, from any kinda endanger, uh, any kinda fire, future fires. But we still have a lot to do and we are working on the projects and trying to remove some of the, uh, underbrush. And that's why we have the, uh, right now, the fire mitigation program.
Mr. Insinger?
Well, I've been out in the field at every fire that we've ever had on the ground. And I can tell you this, this last fire we had, there is so much fuel, fire fuel, on the ground from our previous fires that it sets us up for another fire. And so we have to come up with a, with a way, with an organization like Go Green or somebody else that can come in and help us. Bluebonnet Electric has been, we are so blessed to have them in our community and how they support us. They have done a lot. But reducing the fuel is the key to reducing our next fire. It's very simple, it's mechanic, it's not, it's not political. That's just the way it is. Our community came together. My parents lost their house in the fire. I've been part of it. And, um, I specifically, when I come to office, I am supporting, I have much background in conservation, Houston toads and all of those things. And I have specifically will, will try to come up with a program that we can, that people can easily dispose of debris at their homes, at their houses. This is done in many counties, it's not rocket science, it's not something that we have to reinvent. It's about satellite places to get rid of your waste and reduce fuels to reduce fires.
Mr. Mulkey?
First, definitely we need to get rid of the fuel on the ground. Um, the, the sticks that are standing out there from the two thousand and eleven fire, the ones that are there now from this last fire, if, if nothing else, they're an eyesore. And the people who have owned- And the people who have owned the properties out there, some of them moved back, some of them don't, some of them lost their house twice and they're never again. So that's definitely something we, we really need to do. And I know that's going to be a money sucking event, really. I mean, it's going to take a lot of money to get a lot of these things done, but we've got to keep working on how to get that done. Now, what about the fires themselves? I'll bet when we had the two thousand eleven fires, that's the first one that I was involved in here, that there's no way any of us thought that another fire that big was going to come through again as soon as it did, especially after all the rain that we had. And yet, there it was. One of the things that I was told, and I'm going just simply on the, on the fact that this person told me this and I believe it to be true, was the big plane finally came in to drop all the retardant, the big seven forty-seven looking thing, or DC ten, whatever it was, that it has to, it dropped load here and it had to fly back to Tennessee to reload. Well, what if we check out, seen about getting that, that company? Because my understanding again is that they, we don't have any kind of central location, they don't in the United States to fly from, either west coast or east coast, pretty much. What if we were able to get them to be able to build a place here in Bastrop County? Brings more revenue in for us. And then it also has a centralized place where they can load this stuff up for fires all around Texas because Texas has fires all the time. Just a thought.
Mr. Stavina.
Thank you. So this is a topic that I have much experience in through my position at Bastrop County. Post-two thousand eleven fire, I was proactive and, and receiving training from the Texas A and M Forest Service and, and various other entities on, on defensible space, fire mitigation measures and then things of that nature. You see the county being proactive right now in their mitigation efforts, the fire mitigation program. They actively seeked out FEMA dollars, federal dollars to fund this program. I got to say, hired a great project manager to, to head the project and my father. And, and, and so that's, that's what it's going to take is to be able to, to, to seek funding sources. We all know, we've, we've discussed that we're having personnel issues with the county, you know, employee retainage and paying people what they deserve to be paid. The county can't afford to, to take these fire mitigations, uh, measures on theirs, on theirself. So continue being proactive and seeking out federal dollars to, to do this understory thinning. That understory, the thick Yopon and cedar, just provides ladder fuels. When a wildfire breaks out, you'll see those flames reach the canopy and then it's all over then. It's, it's, it's a freight train on a windy day and you can't, you can't stop it. And so being able to provide landowners guidance as to, to what measures they can take in this understory thinning, what methods, sources that are funding, there's, there's funding available for private property owners to take the initiative to do this understory thinning themselves. You'll find Partners, Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program has money, NRCS has money. Property owners just need to know this information and then they can run with it themselves. So, yeah, just taking those measures and, and being proactive.
Thank you. Next question. What role do you see the county taking in flood preparation and what can the county do to improve flood preparation? Mr. Newman.
I was, I was daydreaming about something. Floating down the river probably. Yes, the river is definitely flood prone. It always has been. I don't know any other way of putting it, but it's, it's going to flood occasionally. What we need is, is, and you're already seeing some of this through Representative Siri A and others, the Judge, Judge Poppy is, is getting LCRA actively involved in getting monitoring so that we know that flood is coming. Sometimes we knew it was coming. When I was working here in, in Bastrop, you know, the LCRA would call us and say, by the way, we're picking up a lot of water out of the dam and, and your park's going to flood. Susan Wendell up there was with the chamber and, and they said, hold it until we get through with the, the Patriotic Festival, you know, and they did. That was, that was amazing to me that they would do that. But they held it up and then as soon as the festival's over, they let it out. And it just, what amazed me, I guess, is we know it's coming, that's fine. It's when we don't know. That's, that's what happened last time. Of course, no one can predict how much rain, we're going to get that many inches of rain in such a few short hours. But cleaning out the rivers might, might help it some. I know the city's looking at dredging out around Fisherman's Park now, getting that sandbar out of there. Things like that slow the flow of the water down. We need to get it on through here. If it slows down too much, then we have the algae break out and we have other problems when, when we have droughts. But it's, it's a tough to say, it's a, it's a tough question, really.
Mr. Pena.
Well, the county has been proactive. We just recently, somebody probably read in the paper, LCRA is going to come through and help us with that, to have their gauges upriver and kind of let us know what's coming down. And also the other flooding part that people don't mention is the low water crossings. We have several in the county, had two. One was not really a low water crossing, but the, the rains were so heavy it washed away. And then we have one right now that we're hopefully, part of the application, we pour grand money to fix that one, to raise that low water crossing higher so we don't have to close it down every time it rains. So we'll, hopefully, hopefully we get that funding. But overall, in, in the, in the county, if you look at the terrain of the county, we have quite a few areas that are pretty flat and then other places are pretty hilly. And every time you have a hill, the rain has to go somewhere. It's going to go downhill. And heavy rains, obviously it's going to flood the lower lands. And, but we are working real hard and trying to find ways to, how to drain that water out. I know we're working on a project over there in Lover's Lane, trying to get some, and we got permission through a property, a private property owner to work on that issue and trying to have some rain flow a different way to the, towards the river. But we have several areas like that in Precinct One. Anyway, but overall, the county has been proactive. We have good Commissioners Court. We're always thinking of how, how we can better serve our community. Thank you.
Mr. Hamner.
You know, I have to agree that Judge Poppy and Commissioners Court has been proactive in getting us the meters and stuff for the river. It's been dammed several times trying to control flooding. Unfortunately, we're on the other end of the dams and when they open them, we get, get the result of that. So that's going to be an education process of the people that live near the river. I believe we have other issues of flooding such as along seventy-one, right around where they just did the flyover for twenty. I, I just watched another one on Okaloa. I was talking to some neighbors, we're doing some roadwork there, but we're not addressing the drainage from those roads. And I believe that we need to study the drainage that we have in this county, maybe redirect it, get it flowing towards the river, which we know is going to go up anyway, but at least protect the neighborhoods themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Malky.
After we've had these last couple of floods and it was shortly after this last one, when I got out and started knocking on doors, that obviously was one of the big issues. I talked to people over on the east side of the school, off of Simpson Lane and Askew Lane back in there, and also some right there on Still Forest, right in the area in Bluebonnet Acres where I live. There has been some work done occasionally and, and this is something that, not being one of the county commissioners, that it's like, I'd really love to help you with this, but I'm just not, I can't because I don't have that kind of power. But I know there's some places where a neighbor has built up a driveway and has ended up because of that, the way the water used to drain out of this one property, now it doesn't drain out of that property. Right there on Still Forest, there's one that now goes, it puddles up in, in the guy's yard and then it finally goes across the street, which is downhill into that fellow's yard and it ended up tearing down into Shane Lake Fitz. Those are things that I'm, I'm sure the county, because of the, the drainage issues along the culverts and that kind of thing, at least that I think the county needs to look at and let the residents know what they can do. And as a commissioner, that's something that I would be very much involved with of trying to help our neighbors and figure out how they can get those things fixed so their yards aren't flooding. Another one was, had to do with the retention pond at the, at the high school near Cedar Creek. There's a trailer park that lives, that's right next door to that, that ended up where the water comes out of that retention pond, goes straight across their property. There's got to be something that can be done about that to where it's not flooding out that trailer park and, and ruining access for people getting in and out of that thing. But again, those are things that people just have to look at. I have other thoughts about being able to warn people in a timely manner on how to do this and it involves a radio station, but we'll talk about that later.
Mr. Stavina.
Thank you. So sitting on that regional council with LCRA, I'm fairly in tune with, with all the concerns and preventative measures being taken to help control our rivers and, and other flooding occurring. I think, you know, when, when God decides to, to dump water on us, it's, it's not a whole lot man can do to, to control that. So you know, your first concern is, is the safety for your, your citizens. This is where a county commissioner will come into play. You've got to be out, you've got to have your crew out along with yourself inspecting these low water crossings and making sure that, that, you know, one, if the water's crossing it, to, to shut that, that crossing down immediately to, to keep from, keep people from driving through them. Secondly, af- the aftermath of the flood, you know, what, what can we do as far as cleanup? There's several different, you know, drainage issues are a major concern. There's money available right now through the Texas Water Development Board to do drainage studies to, to determine, you know, what issues, maybe some, maybe subdivisions came in, infrastructure was not, you know, maybe prior to regulations, infrastructure wouldn't install correctly. And it caused some drainage issues that, once you receive flooding, it, it makes the problem worse. And so being able to determine what areas are having those drainage issues and, and addressing them is, is a major concern as far as managing, managing flooding.
Mr. Enzinger.
I grew up in a couple of communities that Walmart was coming in and there was protests and things like that and it was a long political process. And unfortunately, Walmart came. And the floods will come, the fires will come. We can't stop it. But I can tell you this, we, we don't need to spend money, taxpayer money on studies and things because we already know. It's happened before, it's happened time and time again. There's no need in spending money on taxpayers' issues, but what we do need is a response. And we've had a response, we've had a good community response. Probably the mo- at the most lowest level of technical issue is we need to make sure that our areas and our roads, roads and, and the bridge areas, that our brush is cleaned and that we have proper berms and that the water can flow because it's coming. We can't stop it. So the floods will come, the people who live in flooding prone areas know it's coming. And as a commissioner that's going to be part of emergency services, we, we will be there for them. I will be there on scene when we have flooding. I will look at, visualize the impact as it happens at the time, on the scene, not three days later when somebody calls the commissioner and says, hey, we had some flooding here. I'll be there on the scene.
Thank you. Next question. Do you support or oppose a centralized county road and bridge system as opposed to the separate precinct management now in place? And how do you see the system working? Mr. Pena.
Well, believe it or not, back when I got elected in two thousand eight, we did have, I was commissioner, we did have a presentation about the unified road system at the Commissioners Court. And it was only two of us who really wanted that. The other commissioners were not in favor at the unified road system. So when there's no political will on that, it's not going to go anywhere. But I did, brought it up at the Commissioners Court and it was a good presentation, the pros and cons of a unified road system. I think in the year twenty twenty, when we have about a hundred thousand people here and where Precinct One is going to be even smaller, that probably that's going to be the time to talk about unified road system. Because right now, after twenty ten, I'm not centralized. My maintenance barn is located right next to Camp Swift. Camp Swift used to be Precinct One, now it's Precinct Four. And then I, my boundary extends all the way to Tucker Hill Lane, just north of the seventy-one and south of the river, that strip all the way down there. And then I have Tahitian Village because I live in Tahitian Village. And, and I have like Bastrop Acres. But you go east of ninety-five, Bucys, that area, that's Precinct Two. And so I have a long ways to travel from, from my maintenance barn all the way to Tucker Hill Lane, because there's only one way to get down there. You go ninety-five and seventy-one. But yeah, I, I can, I can easily entertain a unified road system, but I think we ought to wait until the census of twenty twenty.
Mr. Hamner.
I would definitely advocate a unified road system. I'd like to see the equipment consolidated. I'd noticed that the Precinct One barn was actually kind of out of the precinct when it's out there and by Camp Swift itself and most of the work is over in the city or out in subdivisions along seventy-one. So I, I, logistically, that didn't make sense to me, being a logistician. I can see a volume buy discounts by buying the material for all four precincts at once. I can see the advantage of using the different equipment that's in the four precincts more efficiently, maybe saving fuel when we're hauling road base and stuff. Instead of using seven ton dumps, we use a twenty-one ton belly loader. I'd like to see the savings also put forth in the training of the personnel and keep more work in-house rather than having to contract it out. Thank you.
Mr. Newman.
I've, I've wanted to look at the unified road system for some time now. I, I haven't made up my mind. I don't think you should make up your mind right until you get all the facts and make sure that this is the best thing for the citizens of this county. But the turf battles over lines and, and, you know, I can't fix something just because it's crossing a street. This is crazy. This, we need to help each other. Just week before last, I met with the engineer that actually handled the Unified Road System or brought that project to Hayes County. And I, I, he lives here now and made him out of, out of party, actually. And we got to talking about this and he said, this is definitely the way this county should go. So I'm just taking one person's advice at this time, but I would like to look at a unified road system and make sure that this is, works for us, that we can share equipment, time, resources, personnel. If it means that, that we concentrate everything into one area and fix something right, let's fix it right or we don't have to go back and keep patching it all the time. Let's do it right the first time and, and use our resources wisely. Thank you.
Mr. Stavina.
I'm certainly intrigued by the idea. When you think, for one, it keeps politics out of your, your road and bridge maintenance and repair. You centralize your road and bridge crew, you, you pool your equipment, your manpower and, and you do, you do the work as, as a ad needed, on a as-needed basis as, as recommended by a professional engineer that, that oversees these roads. I think in, in discussions with, with various elected officials as state, on a state level, I've heard mimic time and time again that, that as the population grows, this is certainly a, a better, better option of managing your road and bridges. I'm, I'm not saying that, that it might be the right way as of yet, but I think it's, it's definitely a discussion that we need to have. And as Commissioner Pena had mentioned, you know, if it, if this is something we think would, would be, would behoove Bastrop County in the near future, the, the time to have that discussion would be now and, and get the wheels spinning on that and make sure that, that, you know, this is going to be the best method of road and bridge ma- road and bridge maintenance for Bastrop County.
Mr. Enzinger.
Well, as Bastrop County grows, we're kind of like an infant and we're not unique to anybody, any other county that has grown before us, okay? So we move forward and we grow. And at some point, they, there's an, there's a, there's a opportunity to do the unified road system. And so this is what I think. I think we're not ready. I don't think we're mature enough yet for it. Some point it may come. My biggest concern about the unified road system is it takes away the entrepreneurship of our different precincts we have four. And my biggest concern as a conservative and a Republican, it creates another layer of bureaucracy. It creates less- It creates less innovativeness. And so, I'm, like the other speakers tonight, I'm on the bench, I don't know. I think it is something that will come. It's an opportunity, but as your commissioner, I will monitor our growth and our opportunity for that, and I will never allow it to take away the individual entrepreneurship or growth of our, our individual precincts.
Mr. Mulkey.
One of the things I think that's great about this discussion that we're having right now is because, as Colton has mentioned to several others, that this is a discussion we need to be having. And it doesn't cost us a dime to discuss this and start looking at it and planning ahead. Anything we do as a Commissioners' Court, fortunately, it's not just one person that's jumping out there and saying, okay, well, this is what we're going to do next. It's all five people between the four commissioners and the judge that get to discuss this and put their collective brains together and see what is best for the county. Now, the unified road system may save the county money by combining everything and the equipment and the material and getting discounts and so forth. But there may be other mitigating factors that aren't really as good for the county. So, obviously, all of those things need to be put together and have the group of Commissioners come together and have hearings on it, discuss it, have public input on it, whatever needs to be done to decide what's going to be best for the county and then move on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, do we have time for questions from the audience? Okay, we probably could take one, maybe two questions. Ms. Hubbard? We've had time for one or two before we go to closing statements. All right. The questions will go to all candidates. I know some people have sent up questions for individual candidates, but I'm going to ask it of all, to be fair. And we're going to start with Mr. Hamner. What are your thoughts or ideas for, to help our businesses and communities immediately recover from frequent natural disasters?
Well, I'm trying to correlate how the businesses, I know there's a downturn and people coming to do business with us. And what I really think would help us the quickest is to increase our sales tax volume. And I think the best way to do that is actually have businesses come to this town that offer jobs in this town, this community, rather than have fifty, eighty percent, whatever the number it is, that's currently traveling to Austin and spending their money there. So, I think the best way to recover from any economic downturn, be it from disasters or what it might be, is to take advantage of the growth, bring businesses here, employ the residents here, and keep that money in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Newman.
As more and more people visit our community, it hits our businesses. And I think our Chamber of Commerce and our County's Economic Development Group has done a good job, and of course, the height with all their marketing ability has brought a lot of people fresh eyes to our community. Those, those trips and those, those people that come in our community are leaving sales tax dollars here, but they aren't impacting our school system or, or much of our road system even. But that's, that's what we've got to have more of if you want, tourism is just a good, clean industry to promote. We've got a natural resource here that we need to capitalize on, and I think that that's how you help the individual, whether it's a gas station or a cafe, you know, it, they all benefit from it. Now, the county can't do much for helping, you know, a manufacturing company or something like that, there's just not a lot, the county has the power to do. But I think that tourism is something that we should really get on board with and try to invite more and more people to our, our community.
Mr. Pena.
One thing we did as Commissioners' Court is we did initiate the tourism department. And, and Adina Lewis has done a great job in that position. We've come a long ways, we really have done good things in the county in terms of tourism, and just been out and about, and more people are coming. And we're going to see that as we go along, our tourism will increase. And of course, when it comes to economic development, we appreciate the cities with their economic development corporations, because they do draw industry down here, which is good. At the same time, we want to keep that balance with tourism, because we do have a wonderful history here in Bastrop County. This is a historical place, we've been here a long time, and I'm proud to be a member of this community. I used to come here since nineteen seventy-eight at Camp Swift, my unit was located there. So, after my wife retired, we decided to move here in ninety-five. And so, we really enjoy this community. Thank you.
Mr. Enzinger.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, the question was, what are your thoughts or ideas to help our businesses and community immediately recover from the frequent natural disasters, fire floods and so?
We're in a good place in Bastrop County. We have, we are, we're on the map. We've had our disturbances, our issues, our fires, and we've learned from them, and people look up to us. I can say from a law enforcement perspective that people come to us and they lean on us to help them plan for a possibility and their issue. We've come together as a community, it's amazing that, what we have done. So, we don't need to be on the negative. Bastrop County is a wonderful, beautiful place with caring people and responsive people that know how to handle catastrophes, know how to take care of their neighbors, know how to take care of their people, know how to vote. And if we continue that tradition, if we make our schools great, if we make our roads great, if we make our community great and beautiful, then we are ahead of the game.
Mr. Mulkey.
I believe that tourism in itself can obviously be a wonderful thing for a town. Having lived in a couple of tourist type spots such as Las Vegas, growing up there for several years, and then especially in the small town of Juneau, Alaska, tourism can definitely be a curse sometimes. When you have too many people coming in at one time, your whole system gets overloaded. Law enforcement's overloaded, emergency responders are overloaded, the stores run out of product, it's insane. So, definitely tourism is a good thing, but it has to be managed, it has to be marketed properly. And I think if we do that, if we come up with some ways that, some reasons other than what we all love about Bastrop, we need to be able to get that out to other people about what is so good about Bastrop. And I know there's some marketing done as such that the Chamber of Commerce does, they do a great job of promoting businesses and local restaurants. And one of the comments earlier had to do with people coming in and they're buying gas or they're going to the restaurant, and they may not help directly the manufacturing companies, but those people that own those businesses now have extra money that they may go to that manufacturing company for and get other things. So, it's definitely a win-win all the way around, and with the kind of community that we have, the helpfulness that we have out here, if we have another mass disaster like we had last time, of course, every time we have one, people upstream from us are having several of them as well, it seems like. But we can, if it's marketed properly, and I hate to say that for catastrophe type situation, but if it's marketed properly, you're going to get the response that you want from people from outside coming in to help. And while they're here, they're going to be spending money, and they're going to be learning more about our community and what we have to offer for things of entertainment for them and their families.
Mr. Stavna.
As it relates to natural disasters, I think it's imperative that you achieve recovery as soon as possible to help these businesses. Looking back to the fires, you're going to have people that say, well, you know, where are we going to go this weekend? Eh, Bastrop County just had a fire, that's, that's going to be a blith, let's, let's go elsewhere. Businesses suffer when, when that happens, so I think it's imperative that, that we achieve recovery as soon as possible. Measures can be taken, you see with Bastrop County, they were proactive in their tree planting efforts, seeding efforts, anything like that to try to get, try to get back to what we were pre-disaster. And then, you know, there's so many opportunities out there that I've been aware of, that, I mean, whether it be studies or recovery, I mean, I'd never recommend pursuing studies and, and, and doing recovery efforts without first looking towards grant money. And you'll find that, that there's so much grant money out there available that, that just needs to take the effort to apply for and receive, and, and you can use those funds. The county's going to suffer from a disaster, that's no question, but help alleviate that, that burden on the county using other dollars, rather, FEMA dollars, state dollars, anything like that. So, let's achieve recovery as soon as possible, get people, get tourism coming back to Bastrop County and watch those businesses prosper again.
Thank you.
I don't think we have time to start another question before closing statements, I don't want to cut you all short on your closing statements. So, we'll start with the closing statements and we'll just stay in our same order. Mr. Newman.
Thank you. I think I'll touch on a few things on my closing that we really haven't addressed yet. Representative Syria is here, he and I met, and I was wondering why it took so long to get that DC-10 from California here. And I said, you know, I even went online and looked up the price of what a used DC-10 would cost, and we talked about it, said, well, it'd probably, it'd be nice to have it based here, but really and truly, it probably needs to be based in Waco, where they can service it and where they can get the fire mitigation material there easier. But, but the entire state should fund that. We need, we need, that's one thing we'd like to look at. Higher education. Businesses come because you, a qualified educated workforce. I know that Houston-Tillson College is looking at us, Austin Community College is doing a great job, they're expanding their campus in Elgin. Unfortunately, Bastrop voted it down a number of years ago, but that, that issue will probably come back up, and the county could probably get behind and support the initiative on that. Colton and I, as he mentioned, we're on the L C R A Community Development Board. I think I've learned more about water and electricity than I ever dreamed I would. They, we meet once a quarter, and it's just amazing, all the experts they bring in to, to drill us on thoughts on what's happening in all the communities up and down the basin. But recreation is another thing I think the county should look at closer, I know Doc will be happy about that. Y M C A is a good start, but we need to make sure that our kids have something to do, and I think the county can take a role in that process. Thank you.
Mr. Pena.
The county commissioners have done a great job in moving forward. There's a lot to do. One of the things I mentioned before that, on, when it comes to parks and recreation, I think where the county ought to move forward to maybe creating a Parks Commission. I know people don't want to hear that commission because it means another layer of government, but I think we're going to continue to attract people down here, and that through tourism, we need to have a good parks system. And it should be a partnership with the cities, it shouldn't be, we should not stand alone. It should always be a partnership with the cities. And the other thing is, education is very important. And I know the, I graduated from U T, and we have some Aggies here, and, and we always push forward our scholarships. And I'm the treasurer for the M L K Scholarship Committee, and we offer scholarships. But the school is doing a great job here, and we do believe in B I S D. And the community has come together with the businesses and partnerships. And the other thing is that we have to do, growing a county like this, we have to continue looking at the infrastructure. We need to continue improving the infrastructure. Because if you're going to attract those folks down here, the industry, you need to have good roads out there. And, and I just want to make myself available to you, after this meeting, we'll have a table there, and I'd be glad to talk to anybody who has additional questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hamner.
First, I want to thank everybody for taking time out of their day to come out here and listen to us. Appreciate you being here. I'm the unknown around here, so I get to meet more of you this way. You know, the thing I've been running on is we need a plan. I've heard good ideas here about the education, about the infrastructure, about building things up to meet the crowd that's coming, but to do that, we need to sit down, the staffs need to work together, I'm talking the staffs of the law enforcements, we've got more than just a sheriff's office, we've got a police department, we've got constables, we've got POAs, we've got water districts, we've got the county. The system I came out of, the U S military, you had a chain of command, and everybody was responsible. I think that in this county, the county should take the lead, and therefore, the county commissioner should be working with all the governmental entities that are within the county to develop plans, be prepared. The best time to build a plan for disaster is before the disaster happens, not after it's been there. Mr. Newman mentioned those bulldozers and bobcats and stuff sitting out there at Camp Swift, he's absolutely correct. We can get a meeting with the National Guard and the state, get an M O U or memorandum of understanding in place, so that the next time there's a disaster, when we call for those helicopters with the water that we already know about, we can also call for those bulldozers and those backhoes that cut fire paths and control the fire quicker. That's the kind of activity that we need here, that's the reason you need to be voting for me to be Precinct One County Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Mulkey.
I had a whole big prepared thing here, but I think what I'm going to go on, I talked earlier about a radio station when we were talking about getting the word out to people when there is a disaster around here. Having a radio station here in Bastrop County, whether it was here in Bastrop or up north in Elgin, Smithville, whatever, I think would be a great benefit to our county because as much good as the emergency management folks do when there is a wildfire or a flood, they have so many other things going on. And like this last time, they were out in areas where they really didn't have any good cellphone coverage, where they could actually get on their Facebook account and tell people what was going on. A radio station can alleviate all of that. You can have somebody on the radio the whole time that people can tune into, and they know where to go for that information. So, that's just a thought with that. As far as the, the rest of the county business goes, with the airplane for the fires, if they can get it in the state of Texas, I think that would be amazing. If it'd be, if it was Bastrop County, obviously, that'd be great for us because we're getting some money, tax dollars, out of that. However, whatever happens in this county, we definitely have got to start planning ahead for what we know is coming. One of the things that I've looked into is trying to get some more medical services for some of the rural areas. You get outside of the three big cities, Smithville, Bastrop, and Elgin, and there's not a whole lot of medical services out there. If we could get some type of a mobile medical wagon as such to go out to these different spots in the county, the rural areas, and be able to, they could go out and do immunizations, they could do wellness checks, all sorts of different things, that could even be charged a slight fee for to alleviate some of the costs on the county. But that in and of itself is going to help our people in the county. I don't have enough time to talk about all the things I'd love to talk about, so if any of you are, as you're coming out, all of us have tables set up out there, I'd love it if you stopped by and asked me some questions about some of these other things, and I look forward to meeting you at some point, and God bless America.
Mr. Stavna.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in making this event possible and to the folks that, that have came to be proactive in their decision on who to support in the upcoming elections. In my position with the county, I've been fortunate to be working in a public servant position, and I've really enjoyed working in that position, working with people, finding solutions to problems, corresponding with, with various entities to get information to people. You'll find that being the reason why I'm running for county commissioner is I really enjoy working with people. I'd like to bring to the table a, be more cooperative in your- is I, I really enjoy working with people. I'd, I'd like to bring to the table a, a, a coop, be more cooperative in your work as a commissioner's, on the commissioner's court and with various other elected officials. I think you get more achieved when you're working together and, and not fighting each other on, on certain issues and that. So that goes from sheriff's office to, to other commissioners, our county judge, treasurer, all, all offices. Having a corp, a, a good relationship amongst each other, you'll, you'll be able to accomplish more. I think, as we mentioned, to touch on issues again, the county is, is growing and, and, and we're headed in a positive direction. And, and it's imperative that we maintain that image and keep up with our ecotourism and, and continue to watch Bastrop County grow and prosper.
Mr. Enzinger?
My name is Fred Enzinger. I need your vote and I need you to spread it in Precinct Three, please. As Jerry Clower said, I'm educated way beyond my intelligence. I'm not the smartest man in the world and that's why I use the people around me, my circle of influence, to help me in my daily affairs. I am a certified public manager. And I have taken this opportunity to run for this office because I care, because I have a family, because I have children in our schools, and because this is one of the greatest communities that I've ever lived in. I've been in law enforcement for many years and traveled around. I came here in two thousand and six, I think, and have been here ever since. And I can tell you one thing that you will, when you need your county commissioner, just like you needed your game warden when I served here, you will have me. You call me and I'll be at your doorstep. We won't communicate in my office. We won't communicate outside of that. I will be a proactive, active commissioner. I will be in the business of everything, whether it be roads in Campo or whether it be the youth sports or the recreational opportunities in Bastrop County or whether it be tax abatements or anything you can ever think of, I can assure you that I will be in the middle of it and I will support you. I will support the taxpayers, the voters, the fathers, the mothers, the children, and everybody of our county.
I'd like to thank all the participants in the forum. I think you did a wonderful job and you were very easy to work with. I think I'll turn it over now to Ms. Wumble.
Thank you, Laura. I really appreciate you coming out and helping us tonight. I have a, this event would not have happened without the cooperative effort of many people on different levels in our community. I first want to thank Bastrop ISD for the use of this amazing facility. I secondly would like to thank the IT Department from the city of Bastrop for helping us livestream this. I think it was incredibly beneficial to our community. I also want to thank the Elgin and Smithville chambers. And we use this forum also as a teaching opportunity for the students of Bastrop ISD. Tonight on your cameras were students from the AV department from Cedar Creek High School. And I think they did an amazing job. If you got to see the, this is going to be posted so that you can go back and look at it later, but I've been back in the corner and watching what was live streaming. And it was incredible shots. And so I think you're going to be very pleased if you go back and watch that. And then we also had some government students that were helping to do some ushering. So we're trying to teach our young people the importance of the right to vote. Lastly, I want to thank our governmental affairs chair, Lee Harrell. He was the only volunteer at the Texas Chamber of Commerce Governmental Affairs Conference in November. And they looked at me and said, how did you get your volunteer here? And I said, I just told him, you're not going to be my governmental affairs chair if you don't come to this. So he was the only one there with a roomful of execs that are in the chamber industry. So I want to thank Lee for pushing this initiative forward. So let's give him a round of applause, please. And then I have a very talented staffer. We call him Chamber Rick. Rick Gulcsen did our whole website. He launched it in two weeks, worked with the candidates on getting correct information up. So that man needs a big round of applause wherever he is. I want to thank the candidates for participating. I know that they, I got several questions. What are you all going to be asking us? And I didn't tell a single one of them a single thing. So they were on the spot, on the hot seat, and I appreciate them participating. Please mark your calendars for January twenty-fifth. It is a Monday. It is the sheriff's forum. We have had five of the eight candidates respond that they would be in, participating with that forum on the twenty-fifth. And then mark your calendars for February first for the state rep race. We have both candidates for the state rep who will also be attending this forum. I would suggest you get here early. Caldwell County is also promoting this forum, so I'm, I'm sure we might have some individuals from Caldwell County. But thank you for your attendance and please have a safe trip home. Good night.